I think it was, it's December 3rd and the planning board, multiple planning board meeting. And I believe the first met of the force is Kevin and Sylvia Rodden regarding the conditional use permit. If you'd like to approach him. So, there's a public hearing on this, so please go ahead when you're ready.
Okay, what we're here for is basically, we've already established a permit through the, through the record. Oh, my name is Daniel Dussetman, and I'm going to be the general contractor for the job.
Okay.
And this is Sylvia.
I'm Sylvia Rodden, Kevin Stroud.
And what we're here for, we've already established that we've got the building permit. We're looking to get a conditional use permit for a apartment that's going to be installed in the lower half of this building. The reason for the apartment is at some point either Sylvia's mother, as she's getting older, she may be using the apartment, or their brother who has come into some hard times and stuff like that. He may be ended by using the building. Otherwise than that, they don't plan on having, you know, anybody else using this. We've met all the qualifications with Tom as far as the size of what the unit can be. And everything that has to be done, so photo of everything of him. So I guess we're just here to see, you know, make sure that we can get this thing through.
Okay, great. Thank you, Tom. Any comments?
Just backing up what Dan said, I went through pretty great detail with Kevin. And he submitted all the answers to the accessory drawing units required in his zoning ordinance. And I think in very great detail. I don't really have any issues, and I don't think there's a problem there.
Okay. Any members of the board like to comment on the application? Yeah, okay, all right. Or any members of the public like to comment on the application? Okay. So, would it be appropriate if someone could motion to approve it?
You should open a public hearing.
What's that?
You should open a public hearing.
Have to open a public hearing. Okay, so, I thought we had done that, but... So, I'm going to open a public hearing. Is there any members of the public that would like to comment on the proposal? All right. Seeing that, I think we want to close the public hearing. So, I think at this point, it might be appropriate to entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
All right, was there a second? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it.
That's it. Yes, I have the building permit. The rest have been there. I'll process it and let you guys know.
Okay.
This is not yet. Yeah.
Yeah, great.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Everybody.
That one. Everybody go home now.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night.
So, next is approval of minutes. Do you have any chance to read the minutes?
I did. I did.
Want to make comments or corrections?
Tom did make one comment about, which he emailed to me about separating Tom, Michelle, and I into a staff category, which I did to the minute, so they are updated to reflect that. And I'll just continue that going forward.
Okay, all right, great. Okay, so, I think we need to make no motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes have been approved, so is there any correspondence?
No.
Okay, no correspondence, all right. So, the next matter is proposed amendments to the Rollins for zoning ordinance. And I have to say, I'm surprised there's no one here in terms of the recent meeting. But, so, again, I have trouble getting this through my mind. What is the timeframe for getting proposed amendments?
I just checked on that today. We have to have, assuming that we just have one public hearing and there's no reason to, you know, assuming we only have one public hearing, we have to notice it by January 1st and we have to have it by January 13th.
Okay, and when do we need to propose, and we have to notice it, and then when do these proposed amendments have to be submitted for the public at?
We should have final language to present for that public hearing so that people know exactly what the proposed changes will be.
Okay.
You said January, so we have this meeting, and then what else? Just the January meeting, that's it between now and then?
So, you can have the, so my suggestion would be to have the public hearing attached to the January meeting. But that would still require another meeting to say that, yes, we agree about the following potential revisions in the language about them. Or we can use the January meeting in that way and have another meeting shortly after the January meeting to say, to have the public hearing.
Okay. Anyone have any thoughts on proposed amendments?
I asked Tom to think about that.
Yeah, one of the ones that we did come up with that we forgot to mention last week, last month, is junkyards. We don't have anything in the ordinance to regulate them. And Carol and I have been in contact with legal in Concord. And they recommended rather than have a standalone ordinance, have it as a section in the zoning ordinance. So, that's going to be a brand new section that will come before you.
Okay. We also, don't we also have to define pork chop lots?
Yes.
There was, there was a number of, yes, we reviewed, at the last meeting we mentioned some. So, yes, define pork chop lots is definitely one.
And I think Michelle sent some stuff that we were going to look at, yeah.
So, I'll work with Tom and we need to make sure we get all of our topics agreed upon. And then Tom and I can work on sending you all language for consideration.
Does language have to go before legal or anything like that if we're proposing something?
It depends how, oh, what requires a building permit. It depends on what it is we're revising, but the short answer is no, I don't think so. The zoning ordinance dictates what the town requires one get a building permit for. And it is burdensome, I would say, to property owners. It's more comprehensive than most other towns are. So, Tom and I are looking over that. And I've asked Tom to come up with more concise language that eliminates painting, for example.
But does language out there, we can borrow from other, or is there standards out there as far as the verbiage? Industry standards pertaining to these subjects.
Generally speaking, yes, but sometimes we're like Rollins for getting to a little more specifics. But we can use, you know, other ordinances as examples, but there's not really, there's not really a boilerplate thing.
We'd have to tailor it to the specifics of our town.
Yeah.
Right, that's what it's all about. Right, we can look at lots of examples, but there is no one guiding light.
But if we're using verbiage that's out there, chances are it's compliant.
It won't, yes.
Well, right, it's just, it's more about why would we require a permit or not require a permit for X? It's more of those kinds of, you know...
It's for, instead of just language.
Right, like that's the heavier lift is to think about, you know...
The topics that we need to address.
Right, because for some reasons you want them to make sure that these things meet code for safety. But then, there's also fees, you know. Do we want them for no other reason than for fees? But the other thing is that building permits inform assessing. That if you replace your roof, then your house now has a new roof. And that would affect in some way, even if only slightly, the value of the home. So, you know, but at the same time not to be burdensome to property owners that every time they get room, they would need a building permit.
We've hit on some good topics in our past meetings that it's got to be, like minutes wise, that we've had some good conversations about some things we want to modify for this time of year. I remember the pork chop lots, that was specifically one of the building permits.
So, if any of you, those are, those are the three?
We need to update the applications.
That's, that's a, yes, but I don't...
And we need to figure out whether that needs to, what level of approval we need to get to update those.
That's a really good...
That, that's what you meant.
So, are applications like...
Conditional use permit application form, the forms.
Yeah, like all the ZVA forms, the forms for this, like they have like different requirements, like outdated requirements, but...
And make sure we're consistent across applications.
But the, I mean, that should be pretty much an administrative task, right?
I would think so, except when they may not, when you may have a conflict, like...
Well, I, so I approached Charlie Putnam, who's the chair of the ZVA, about updating them because there's inconsistencies. And he said, he was like not willing to just have it be administrative.
Well, so it's the correcting of inconsistencies. So, how many of butters, you know, if you're going to change how many of butters, that would be in an ordinance. But right now that conflicts. So, if you want to remind me about...
I have the list of all of the inconsistencies through all of the...
So then, Tom and I can evaluate which ones are a zoning ordinance change and which ones can be just administrative.
Because Charlie basically was like, you know, if we're going to go by the state, the state changes standards and the forms are just outdated, but he didn't want to necessarily change them without, you know, maybe there was a reason we kept them that way or whatever. But, I mean, I think chances are it was likely just nobody did it.
Nobody paid attention.
Yeah, if we, if we could get them, then we'll look more.
Probably that.
Who has those right now?
Carolyn and I have them collectively together, but I probably have the most comprehensive because I end up sending them out to applicants as a question.
Are they available to us anytime?
Yeah.
On the website?
You want to put a folder on the drive of applications and share it?
I think so.
Are they? Okay.
They're on the website, aren't they? Oh, never mind.
You know what the thing is, like, it's not that, it's not that we're trying to like have the lot be available to people. It's just a matter of finding the person who's going to actually upload them and do all that.
Well, and it's also, having something on the website that we're acknowledging is out of date, that we want to revise. And we're always on the cusp of revising it and it never happens.
Yeah.
So, we are.
I mean, some of the ZVA forms I've redone because they were literally typed. And you had to come in and get a copy because somebody didn't have a typewriter. And you, you know, I tried to scan them and it doesn't scan well. So, it's just a matter of like manpower which we're on and... It's just on the list.
Right.
So, Kevin and the rest of you, if there are other things that you remember us talking about and that you remember as part of a certain case that we discussed that you, you know, or you otherwise have ideas about things that should be, could be better, that we ought to look into?
Yeah, I'll go back and look at minutes, at meetings to refresh and then go.
So, we don't have to list the specific ideas that this meeting, we just need them, we can actually bring them up at the next meeting?
So, you know, if we have 18 ideas, we're going to have a problem because highly unlikely that we're going to have 18 warrant articles for zoning revision.
Sure.
So, we're going to have to focus it to the most important practical ones. So, I would say, you know, at least junkyard and building permit, and maybe even pork chop lots. We can, we'll see what comes up with the other revisions, but we'll see what we...
Oh, excuse me, I just, the pork chop lot thing, that's in the subdivision regs, not in the zoning ordinance.
I thought you said, I thought it was, oh...
I thought the issue was it wasn't defined.
Well, it isn't defined, but where is it not defined?
It's prohibited in the subdivision regs. You cannot have pork chop lots. But it's not defined anywhere. It's not defined in the subdivision regs, site review, zoning, it's just not defined.
I thought it was also the zoning that we shall not have.
I'm pretty sure we had this conversation every time we brought it up, that it's in the subdivision regs.
And I totally thought you said, all right, all right, all right.
Well, I'm pretty sure.
So, is that the...
But anyway, if that's the case, then this board has...
This board can just define it at any time and it's not tied to March.
Doesn't have to be in the zoning ordinance at all.
It doesn't?
It doesn't.
Well, the pork chop lots, if the, you know, if, only the zoning ordinance has to go to town meeting. If we want to revise subdivision or site plan regs, then this body can do that at any time of the year.
Okay, I didn't, okay. Going back to my question, and I think you...
Didn't quite answer.
Didn't quite answer it because you, so, again, I'm going to repeat the question, which is,
Sorry.
when is the deadline for ideas?
Well, okay, so, so thank you for that. It depends on, is the January meeting going to be the public hearing date? And we're going to meet in the meantime? Or is the January date going to be the date where we're going to suss it all this out? And we're going to have all our language proposals and we're going to decide what we're finalizing? And then we're going to have that public hearing after that, so...
I think with the holidays, the latter is, makes more sense.
I don't see us having a meeting between now and the January meeting being the holidays, right?
Okay, so then I would say if you would add to the agenda ideas for January, then we will go through all the language revision proposals. And we'll get you language ahead of time so that everybody's prepared to say what they think about things.
According to the notices that I did last year for this, we sussed out ideas in January and have the hearing in February.
Timing wise, that works, yeah?
Does that, does that work?
No. The first public hearing we have to have by January 13th. But further, we have to decide on its date because we have to, and we can do that by email, we have to do that by email. But we have to notice that by January 1st.
The date of the public hearing.
The date of the public hearing, that will happen by the 13th.
The public hearing was January?
Yeah, I think, okay.
Which is similar to what you're saying, we have to set the date before the 1st.
Right.
So, do we need, but do we need, I mean, could we set the date now?
Sure, or we could wait, it doesn't matter. We know we're going to use that meeting on, in the beginning of January.
What's, so what is the latest date that we can have that hearing?
It's usually not the 13th.
Of January, yes.
No, I know, but I wouldn't prefer to be known here.
Chances are, it's going to be a pretty quick meeting.
Well, right.
There's not, I mean, if we have, if we meet on the regular schedule, suss it out, meet on the 2nd date to do the hearing.
It should be a pretty quick 10-minute thing.
No one's going to come.
Not all the board members are going to have to come because you don't need it, you don't...
You just need a quorum, right, three.
You don't need to vote on it.
But we have to pick a date at this meeting because this is the last time we're going to...
January 7th is the first Tuesday.
Oh. So, oh gosh.
My January is wide open. December is not...
Isn't it safer to pick a date now as opposed to...
Yeah, by me?
We have to, this is the last time we're meeting before January 1st, we have to.
So, we have all the players in the room, yes.
And there's always the option of having a separate meeting as a, just as a workshop to consider it, right?
Yes, you know, and then do the public hearing on the 7th when you're actually meeting.
Yeah.
But when do we have to decide that, to notice that?
We have to notice whatever we're doing.
It's 10 days before, so 1, 2, 3, 4. So, we need to notice it by the 28th.
And otherwise, if we, if we met the 7th and had the public hearing, we could have, how many day, the next week? Would we do that or not?
The public hearing after the meeting, is that what you're saying?
No, because that would be the 14th, not the 13th.
And we just can't meet a day early, whatever.
Well, I don't know.
So, it would be better to pick the date tonight so that we can make sure we meet all of our...
That's what I was thinking, it would make sense to, that way we don't have to worry about missing that.
Yes. I'm just going to grab my phone.
Bless you.
As much as December is really cramped, it might be easier. Like, can we not have a meeting to decide about language and what we think about things the week of the 16th?
16th.
16th of...
Of December?
December.
December.
I just want to revisit that idea because January is, there's not a lot of, you know, you've got a week of a holiday, you know.
Giving the first Tuesdays to the 7th, I mean, just our regular meeting is going to be, you know, quarter into the month.
You've got ZVA on Tuesday.
I could do, yeah, which I can't even make, I can do the 19th, which is the Thursday.
Thursday, the 19th.
Anybody else? Could it, 19th?
I think I can, I didn't think to bring my, I don't know why I couldn't.
I think so, but not really, I'm not sure, but I can verify.
At 7th, your regular time.
Sure. Can it be earlier?
It could be earlier.
It can be earlier.
All right.
You can do earlier than 7th.
Sue, how about you?
Yeah, I'll, I'll say the 19th. I'll double check at home, but I'm quite sure it's, 19th is okay.
Yeah, I mean, it will be relatively...
It should be relatively brief, there's no pieces, it's just these things.
So, what time are we going to have, the 7th of July?
Yeah.
Okay, sure, let's do that.
Okay, fantastic.
Then we still, was it the public hearing on...
For the day of the meeting, the 7th.
Yeah. The 7th.
So, that's set.
So, public hearing is...
So, the other things I just wanted to refresh, wasn't there a discussion before about site plans expiring at some point?
About what?
Site plans.
Yeah, we didn't...
Site plans having an expiration date?
Yes.
And don't, I think we need to adopt, don't we have to adopt a ordinance on that, or if you want to do that?
I think, isn't it, isn't it already in there? And if not, there's, I know there's an R saying that addresses, we're saying that if you haven't approved site plan, you do nothing. Then I'm pretty sure it's, it expires in four years.
And I think we wanted to move that out.
I get, I remember, I remember seeing some municipal association email or something about that. And it's now six months ago, but I thought that was a...
I can look through their, their articles and stuff and see.
But also I think we need to be careful, I'm pretty sure we can't be more strict than the state, can we?
I think that's true. I guess I thought that whatever it was, we had an opportunity to tighten it up. And I can't say it in more specificity than that, but...
We'll look.
We'll, we'll, we'll look.
And I'm going to go back to one of my favorites is, impact fees. Now, we have an ordinance, you said, I think I heard you say that.
Well, it's in the ordinance, yes, that we can.
It's in the zoning ordinance.
Innocent we can, but we don't have it, so what will we need to do?
It's up, it's up to the planning board to come up with the fees. But it's, I think what we need to determine is, is it going to be, is there going to be sufficient development to justify it? Because it's a fairly complicated issue. I mean, we have to have separate accounts in banks, like one for schools, one for recreation, one for police, one for fire. If it's not spent in like six years, I think, then it has to be refunded.
So, you have to keep track of that. We have to have like a process.
Administration piece of it was a big piece of it, I think.
So, my, my first question then is, so, is that something that has to be voted on? Or like the pork chop lots, is that something we can just decide?
The, let me think.
So, it's in the zoning ordinance, but we don't need to change the zoning ordinance, we just need...
I think the fee schedule is in the subdivision, or should be in the subdivision regs.
So, again, for my, forgive me.
We should probably check that to see, point taken. Like, I don't know if we can just adopt a fee, a fee structure for something that is...
There's certainly procedure, because we, I mean, we have to justify it. You know, we have to say because of the level of development, we need this extra money in order to increase the size of the school or...
So, for, right, which means that you have to prove that your school is already at capacity and can't handle the development of 200 extra homes. So, you know, we have a lot of learning to do, or I have a lot of learning to do about how that would work. Because, you know, for example, with the school, we would have to stay in touch with them annually to see how enrollment's going and how much more room they have and...
It doesn't even tie into your, your public utilities as well as far as your fire and your police. You have to show how that's going to impact what your current status is as far as costs.
Yes.
And how that development, population is going to affect that proportionally.
Exactly, exactly.
So, that was the administrative piece, I mean, I agree, that's, that would make a person very busy.
Well, it's tough and it would make us very busy, but at the, the other side of that is, we have some huge swaths of land that are not protected.
Right.
And, you know, one of them's 270 acres.
And isn't that the issue that either we, we plan for it ahead of time or then it happens and we're...
It's too late, yeah.
It's too late, so...
We just start off from what we say in these meetings. You know, a lot of times how we find out about loopholes, I need no definitions, is because they come to light.
Yeah.
Like, there's no definition for pork chop lots, who knew?
Right.
All right, so, I think we should look at that as, what we, whether we have to, what the, what the mechanisms are for putting a fee schedule in place.
Because the, whether we have the authority to put a fee structure in place. And Tom, if you can see if, what you can find in writing from another community about how you prove the impact and any other forms or regs about keeping track of it?
Yeah, okay, yep.
Thank you. Because I'd like to get done talking about it and either decide that we're doing it, or that it's a...
I agree, I agree, and I, and I know...
We keep bringing it up and we keep not really deciding that it's a good idea or not, so...
But we also, in the past, said, do we really need them? And then we get a five lot subdivision. You know, it's just, it seems to have happened more and more with what's happening. It is developing around us, you know? When you look what's happened with the blue building and, you know, gagging the little subdivision, I mean, these are, these are happening.
So, if somebody explains me an impact fee, tell me what that is. It would be a separate fee over and above a permit fee. To whom? Who's paying the fee? Oh, the developer. The developer. Which, of course, the cost would be passed on to the ultimate consumer, which would be whoever the home buyer is. But you establish, however we justify it, we establish a dollar amount for the school impact. And we don't have to do all of that, we can just say school and, and fire, for instance. But there's school, fire, public, recreation, and police. Is this only for subdevelopments or for individual houses? Oh, it'd be for individual houses. If you had, if you had a lot somewhere like the gentleman here. Yeah, yeah. If we had impact fees, then they would have to pay it. They would have to pay it, yeah.
So, it's not just for big developments?
No.
If you, if you implement them, you implement them for everybody, for all new?
Okay, I didn't know there was like a guideline for that or just everyone?
We had to pay, we built a house in Dover and we had to pay an impact fee.
Yes, you did.
Some of them were a little bitter about it.
Well, it's all right.
Most people are, but it, I don't...
At least we had somebody in school.
In Dover, though, I have to, I mean, people complain all the time, but it doesn't stop development. It's, you know, I mean, if we had it, if this town had it, you know, 207 acre parcel, someone would come in and complain about it. But, you know, they have to pay it before a certificate of occupancy is issued for any particular property. But that's going to be factored into the purchase price of the home. So, you know, it's, it's going to be a trickle down thing. But in Dover, anyway, I can tell you, or Portsmouth, it hasn't stopped development.
Well, it's, and I'm not saying it, the purpose of this is to stop development so much as to not burden the town. Like, for instance, I think that a lot of these bigger towns are, they have more resources and they're more head the curve than we are. So, for instance, looking at Dover's page, so Dover, for a single residence, the impact fees is follows. 1326 recreation fees, 325 police, 615 fire, $6,629 schools. Total impact fees are $8,895. If you, apartments, four plus units, it seems less, it must be, it's because per unit, 870... Eight seven two, two seven nine, four forty seven, three three oh three, four six oh one, the same thing, so.
But that, that's exactly, it goes to the impact. You know, an apartment would have less chance of having children than, say, a three bedroom home, so that, it's all consistent with that, but that has to be all established.
Right.
With that, yeah.
With that determination.
But then you have to, but then, you have to keep track of whether or not that impact was realized or not, because if the impact wasn't realized, then you have to return the funds.
Right.
After a certain period of time.
I think it's after six years, yeah. It's pretty tricky all the way around. Oh, yeah.
Who keeps track of, who keeps track of those numbers?
Exactly.
I mean, is it every apartment?
Yes. In like.
In a place where you have staff.
Apartments, yeah, there's. There's somebody that does that, just, that's what they do all they want, I'm sure. Well, that's a lot of what they do.
It funds the positions, doesn't it?
Yes. And it's up to this board to decide what that impact fee will be. Once, based on a bunch of input, yes. Oh, yeah, I understand that, too, sure. Yeah, I'm pretty, I'll make sure, but because as Caroline said, it's already in the ordinance, the zoning ordinance, that we can do it. We can do it, but we just don't know what we charge right now. Right, right.
We haven't set any, so we're not charging anything, because it's in the ordinance, but we haven't set any fees.
Right, right. So it would be really a punch in the gut if somebody, you know, all of a sudden, we said, oh, we have impact fees now. I mean, it would be a shock to a lot of people, probably.
Well, there aren't any new construction applications.
But say I had a new construction, I've been living here for a long time, I've decided I'm gonna add on.
Well, it's only for new dwelling units, it's, it's not for.
Just new stuff.
Yeah, it's not for putting a deck on here, yeah, it's for increasing living space, because that's what increases the demand for services.
And see, the other side of the argument is, and I'm not saying that I got the answers, the other side is, you don't have impact fees, someone comes in and puts a two hundred home development, there's no impact fee, so you and I is currently existing homeowners just pays that through an increase, the increase in town services required by that.
Yes.
We pay for that instead of the developer paying for it.
Yeah, I understand. The impact fees are kinda like a building permit fee, it's a user fee. Whoever, yeah, whoever does it, then they have to, like joining a club, yeah, pretty much, you know?
Right, what we're missing, the whole point of, the benefit of them is that now that's money that can be used for these fire trucks and these, you know, that everyone's complaining about, we have to buy.
Yeah.
You know, but it'll all, you know, transparent and everything, it'll all have to be carefully calculated and dispersed, I mean, tracked, but, I mean, we could be missing a huge boat there, you know?
Well, because we've got these big parcels that, you know, one of them's up for sale, but any number of other ones could potentially at any time go up for sale.
Of course, the other thing could be, do a proposed zone, not definitely wanting one, do a proposed zoning change to, like say, increase the acreage for a house in that particular zoning district before.
Well, so that negates the benefit, if you believe it's a benefit of the cluster subdivision, which sets land aside, so, you know, you keep open space as part of a subdivision. Everybody can benefit from the fact that that space stays open, but it allows for smaller lots, so.
Presuming they come in for an open space subdivision, but if it was a conventional subdivision,
we can't force a cluster subdivision.
No, I don't think we can, nor do we, nor can we require it.
Right.
So see, that's actually.
It's in the ordinance, we can, I mean, we can, like other communities will have, if you have, say, a ten acre lot in our forty zone, it has to be a cluster. If it's less than that, then you can do cluster or conventional. But it's almost always to the developer's benefit to do the cluster anyway, because the infrastructure, the infrastructure costs are reduced, you know, fewer roads and drainage.
Water usage per road, per infrastructure.
But what Tom has brought up is something, you know, I was sort of thinking in the back of my mind, just in the very initial stages is, you know, we have countryside residential, maybe we have CNET countryside with much larger minimum lots.
Yeah.
And I'd frankly like to talk about that the next week.
Well, it's all on which side of the fence you're on about, you know, we have a shortage of affordable housing in the region, which means that industry is having trouble finding employees because employees can't find affordable places to live. So, that's kind of a not in my backyard approach. You know, land is finite, which means that land values are always gonna go up. If you make lots really large, then you minimize the overall development potential. We can do that, but are we, you know, I guess there's no right or wrong answer to that, it's all, I think, personal values and in what kind of place we wanna live in. You know, the cluster subdivision is nice because it maintains open land, but you're also getting a lot more density. But the density provides for more people to have housing. But we don't, I mean, I guess individually, we don't have an obligation to care, but, you know, we are part of a region that is having problems with housing, so, you know, I'm not trying to push values one way or the other about it, but it's an interesting, it's an interesting point.
And I was just, and I think I prefaced my sayings a very early thought, I mean, the other thing is that we don't have, we're not a town like Newington that has giant industry that can pay for.
Subtide everything, yeah.
You know, I don't know.
And housing will always be a burden. But, but this town doesn't even, doesn't seem to really want commercial or industrial either. It just sort of wants to maintain it, maintain like the way it is, but, but it's never gonna stay the way it is because those property owners have the right to do what they look with those properties, so, you know. It's an interesting conundrum, you can't really zone a district no longer developable, you know, or.
Didn't suggest that.
Well, no, 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 I didn't mean to suggest that you were, but, you know, I think, you know, I guess what I'm trying to say is, you know, there's, everybody in town, I think, would have a different approach and, you know, is somewhere else on the spectrum about the answer to this. Because it's a, it's a conundrum. Because there's no easy or correct answer.
Well, the town could buy that parcel. The town could buy that parcel and dedicate it as a park.
Well, right, but the question is, so, you know, the people, do they wanna, you know, do they wanna put their money where their values are, that's really what it comes down to. We want it to stay the way it is, but do you want it to stay the way it is enough that you're willing to pay for, to buy those people out?
Exactly.
And the answer to that is likely no. So then what?
And if we had impact fees, could that help fund that or not?
It would help fund the impact for, you know, schools, fire, police.
But open space, does it help fund open space, I think it's.
Oh, no, no, no.
I would.
Yeah.
Again.
This, right there, it's for those specific uses. I mean, in Dover, we have, this is a huge mistake. We started doing transfer development rights so that people could buy the development right of a lot, leave that lot vacant, and increase the parcel in their subdivision. But, and that money can go into the conservation district for the purpose of purchasing land that we, you know, dedicate for conservation, so in theory, it's a great idea, but it's, it needs some revision.
So that's sort of like a carbon credit kind of deal, you're saying, where you could, like, for instance, the condos that are kind of tightly packed together beyond the Toyota dealership? Is that, is that part of that?
Yes.
Where they trade, it got very incredible density and they got that by keeping open space someplace else?
Right, right, they pay, they pay the money, they pay, you know, X number of dollars per unit, and then that money goes into an account that then can purchase land, you know, for the city to own and dedicate it just as recreation or open space or conservation land or whatever. It works.
And that's done via an ordinance?
Yes, yeah.
And what's that ordinance called or refer to it?
Well, it's in the zoning ordinance, it's transfer development rights.
I have to write that down, transfer development rights.
Yeah, T V R is what it's, the short term, but it's transfer of development rights. But that's another thing we had to go through with this whole process and procedure of establishing, you know, what, what the dollar amount is gonna be. It was quite a project.
I have to ask, say, where, you know, we are on Pinecrest Lane, but I know that the property behind us is protected land. How did it become protected land?
That's a great question, I don't know.
I mean, it's, but, at the same time, our street is urban residential. I find this kind of contradictory, but, but, beyond that, urban residential with protected land there.
Well, because the zone for Pinecrest and Cohen, it's a teeny little zone of urban residential that abuts commercial, that protected land is actually in a commercial zone.
It could be wetlands, it could be.
And it is pretty wet, yeah.
Like, like wetlands, which is what.
And that's often why land is protected, because somebody went in and looked at developing it or thought about it and then said, oh, it's wet, and then.
Or they did the development and then they donated their, put the land into conservation to protect it.
Yeah.
Because they can't use it anyways.
That was my son. Yeah, totally come to knock on the open space.
That's kind of cynical, the explanation of it, but, I thought that.
Yeah.
Well, I think we have a lot of things that you wanted, thank everyone for the patience tonight, I just, I think that unfortunately, if we don't think about things, then things are just gonna happen, and maybe it's okay for things to just happen, but.
You're right, but, so, one more point about the five acres, personally, I love the five acre problem a lot, you know, like, I think, I think it's more aligned with what people want, which is more open space. I think people tend to not like the cluster subdivision, even though it allows for open space, but I don't know, because I'm just one person. And so that reminded me about the master plan, and I would be hesitant to suggest that we do any kind of revision to zoning that really changes its use or its potential for development without revisiting or re-adopting, revising that section of the master plan. The master plan's entirely out of date, but, but whatever we do for zoning ordinance revisions really ought to reflect what's in the master plan. Because the master plan is supposed to reflect what the people in the community want, want roles for it to be.
Is that a legal requirement?
We are legally required to have a master plan and keep it up to date, it has some minimum number of chapters, and then it has optional chapters.
What's that saying is that we don't have to only enact zoning ordinances or proposed changes that are consistent with the master plan?
I don't know that it would be illegal to do so, but I'm wondering why you would, I mean, you know, like, they're supposed to be congruent, the master plan, you know, I think that's the intention of the master plan and why we're, you know, required to have one is because all the bodies in town are supposed to consult it to be sure, it's kind of like a check and balance to make sure that all the bodies, all the, all the boards and committees are respecting the view of the residents, because that's the document that says this is what the residents want.
Right, it's a guidance document, essentially, that says how the town wants to go, and then the other, the ordinances are revised accordingly.
And I'm not suggesting that we shouldn't update the master plan, what I'm reacting to is, what I get is the idea of what's, to the lack of a better phrase, kick the can down the road. I don't wanna kick the can down the road because, I mean, we've already got, we're not gonna squeeze in changes to the master plan between now and
Sure.
January seventh or whatever.
Right, so the other thing is, you can propose a change, and we can consider it, and we can consider whether or not that change varies greatly from the existing master plan.
And where is the master plan, by the way, is it on the website?
No, it's not, it is a, it is a, we have one single paper copy, and I keep meaning to try to scan the master plan, I apologize.
What happened if I got, if I got thrown away by accident, I guess we'd be in big trouble, huh?
I have some chapters.
She, she, yeah.
Isn't that an ongoing kind of thing?
I have recreation.
I mean, the master plan is always being updated, isn't it?
It's, I mean, usually it's updated on the schedule, like, certain chapters get updated, and then X years later, X chapters get, I mean.
But it's ongoing.
Usually, yeah.
Well, it can be ongoing, that's the more financially level way to do it, but you can also, like, do it once and then leave it alone, and then do it entirely again. It's just more manageable if you break it up and keep at it.
Instead of starting from scratch.
Well, starting from scratch, right, but, yeah. But also, you can, I think if you have, you know, a certain number of chapters, and every year you're revisiting one of those chapters, then it's always relatively up to date, but also, the board and the community are used to the process. Oh, it's that time of year again, we have to go talk about how we feel about, you know, this other chapter of the master plan, and everybody's kind of used to the routine of it, I think, which has value.
How big is this document, the master plan?
It's in a two inch binder.
It's not that big.
It's not that big.
So, are we talking fifty pages, twenty five pages?
Oh, no, it's probably like a hundred pages, maybe? It's bigger than the zoning ordinance, which is a hundred pages, but it's not very much bigger. So, maybe a hundred, a hundred twenty pages. But it's.
Can we scan it in?
Yeah, I made myself a big note. I will, I will go to scan and send it to you all.
And I may one last comment on impact fees. If you look in section thirteen dot two of the zoning ordinance, that's eight pages of just impact fee stuff. It talks about the methodology and, you know, so it would give us more of an idea of the work required to do it, and then what we would have to do to maintain it.
Well, and is it still legal?
What?
Is it still legal, whatever's in the zoning ordinance, is there anything, like, does it require updating? Or is there anything about the language as it exists that should be revised?
I guess we would have to review it to see.
Well, right, I'm just putting that out there, that I wouldn't wanna just blankly accept that whatever we have is good to go, because it's old and never been implemented.
But how old could it be, the state just adopted them, I mean, allowed for the adoption of them, well, maybe longer than I think.
Well, okay, so for the five years that I've been here, they've been in the ordinance and we haven't done anything with them, so, you know, I don't know anything about the state law, but they may be fine, I don't mean to say that they're not.
Right, right, well, give us an idea anyway.
For sure.
Alright, okay, well, thank everyone for coming tonight, and they're gonna sacrifice here, I mean, again, in December, in December, that was my idea. So, a motion to adjourn, someone make that?
Can I just give one little comment?
Sure.
The, the school budget public hearing is the seventh. Where the budget committee wants for the town. The school budget hearing.
Because that would be a public hearing, okay?
Okay, so, we're still within the thirteenth, thank you, Nancy, so.
Because we decided to change it.
So, the ninth.
And what about the Thursday, can we, so we were talking about the seventh, right, the ninth, we want to do the ninth.
For both our public hearing and our regular planning board meeting.
Is that okay with people?
Yeah.
That would be fine.
What are we talking, the ninth of?
Uh, January.
So the sixteenth of December and the ninth of January.
No.
Nope?
The nineteenth.
Nineteenth, sorry.
The nineteenth of December and the ninth of January.
Probably said exactly wrong.
Sarah, could you send an email out to the whole planning board so that alternates or whoever wasn't here tonight, and all of us can be reminded of those dates? Wonderful, okay.
Ninth of January.
Ninth, Thursday, ninth, very good.
Alright, thank you folks.
Alright, wait, a turn, any second.
I'll have you ever say aye.
Aye.
Aye or no? Alright, thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I can.